Let's call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for District 128. The order, Monday, October 28th. Everybody can stand and please decide.
The leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Pat Rudy.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Karen Lundstad.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, so we have everybody today. Let's briefly review the agenda. We will open it up for public comment. Anybody who'd like to speak, I'd ask you to limit your comments to three minutes or less, please. We'll have education presentations and student recognition. We'll have updates from our student school board representatives. We'll have the superintendent's report. We'll approve the consent vote agenda. And I will highlight one item there. We are going to remove item 3B from the approval of the consent vote agenda and bring that back next time. Let's see, then we have brief updates from facilities and finance, program and personnel. SEDOL, anything? Yeah, little update from SEDOL, and then Jim, I need to speak.
Yeah, just have a brief comment.
Okay. And then, we are also going to add a closed session tonight. Topic being employment of an employee. That would be five ILCS 120/2C1. There will be no action taken after that executive session, okay? But we're going to convene briefly to discuss employment of an employee. All right, anything else? All right, would anybody from the public like to speak tonight?
Yep, go ahead. Thank you.
Hi there, do I need a mic?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't know if I can do this and read at the same time. I'll try. My name is Kelly Missurick. I'm a 20-year resident of District 128, and my three children graduated from LHS. I'm also here as a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. Moms is a grassroots, nonpartisan group working to end gun violence that I joined shortly after the school shooting in Parkland, Florida. I spoke to you a few weeks ago at the PNP committee meeting and asked that you oppose IASB Resolution Number One at the upcoming annual meeting. This resolution calls for giving school districts across the state discretion to armed teachers, but arming teachers would make children and everybody else in school less safe. This board opposed a similar resolution last year, and I applaud you for that. Thank you very much. I'm here tonight to ask for your public assurance that our IASB delegate will be attending the meeting and voting no to Resolution Number One. I won't repeat the facts that I shared at the committee meeting. I told you I had a lot, and I'm good to pass out some, I'll give you some more before I leave. But like everyone else, I'm horrified by school shootings and feel strongly that guns don't belong in our schools. Our school buildings are meant to be places of sanctuary, safety, and learning for our kids. The presence of guns at school adds an unpredictable element that puts educators and students at increased risk. There is no data that indicates arming teachers will make schools safer. Instead of spending money to arm and train teachers, let's spend our taxpayer dollars to hire additional mental health professionals and school social workers, establish threat assessment programs to understand and intervene when student is at risk to themselves or others, and continue to implement security upgrades to prevent access to our schools and classrooms. We can all agree that something needs to be done to reduce gun violence in our country and to protect the lives of our children when they're at school. Safety school experts, teachers, many law enforcement professionals, and our medical professionals all agree that arming teachers and bringing more guns to our schools is not the answer. I urge the board and your delegates to continue to oppose any effort that would arm staff or teachers, including IASB Resolution Number One. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service to our district.
Thank you.
Sure, sure, and just thank you for coming to the committee meeting earlier in the month and coming tonight. I am the IASB delegate for this board to the, to that meeting that will happen later in the month. I can assure you that is, I'm planning to be there, and I'll make every effort to be there. And we'll, we have one more committee meeting to discuss those, opportunity to discuss those resolutions, but I can assure you that our, my position and our position has not changed from last year where we opposed that, that particular resolution. So, I will, I will do our part.
Okay, that's great to hear. Thanks very much.
Okay, anybody else who'd like to speak? All right, let's move on to student recognition.
Hello, everybody. John Gilliam, Principal of Vernon Hills. I have the privilege tonight to recognize one of our fine athletes. So Coach and Lexi, come on up. Lexi Shulman is the young lady who we are honoring tonight. I'll let Coach talk a little bit about her. I have the privilege of being friends with her parents, and her dad Eric has been telling me for years that we have quite a golfer coming our way. And so, she's a freshman this year. I was able to watch her from afar as she climbed the ranks to where she ultimately finished. So that was cool, but then I also had the opportunity to play with her in the staff-student golf match. And proud to say that we, we tied for first place, five under, nine holes, pretty impressive. And I'm proud to say that I maybe had one shot count, and she had just about all the rest of them. So Lexi's a good kid. We're happy to have her as a freshman and for three more years. Coach Steve Downey's going to talk a little bit more about her.
Good evening, everybody. I'm the head girls' golf coach, as was mentioned, also a counselor at Vernon Hills High School. And I also was hearing about Lexi for probably at least the last two or three years from other coaches and other, other players from other teams. So definitely excited to have her on the, on the team this year. So a few things about her. She set a number of school records this season, and I'll list a few here. And if you're not a golfer, just believe me, these are really, really impressive scores, right around par. So her dual-match nine-hole season average was a 36. Her 18-hole season tournament average was a 73. Her low single nine-hole round was a 33 at Vernon Hills Golf Course. Her low single 18-hole round was a 67 at Vernon Hills Golf Course for the Cougar Classic, which is a team we also won. All of her finishes at the IHSA Regional, Sectional, and State are also school records. At IHSA Regional, she placed second with a 77. At IHSA Sectional, she placed third with a 72 in a field of 112 golfers at a very tough golf course. And then at IHSA Class 2A, and for golf, 2As are the biggest schools. That includes Stevenson, Barrington, New Trier. So at the IHSA 2A State Finals in Decatur, on October 18th and 19th, she placed fifth, which is considered All-State. And her scores for the two days were a 73 and a 76 for a total of 149. And Lexi is the first All-State girls' golfer in the history of Vernon Hills High School by long shot. And not only is she a terrific golfer, but she's also a great person as well, very easy to coach. She doesn't let a bad shot or a bad hole get her down, and she has the same demeanor and attitude regardless of how she's playing, which in golf, this is definitely a very big feat. She's also very humble and does not brag about her scores. She's a good teammate and gets along very well with the other girls. She's also very coachable and willing to take advice, even with how talented she is. So Lexi, I would like to present you with this All-State certificate, and congrats on an amazing freshman season.
Here, you stand, and I'll coach. Take your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Lexi, these are your terms?
Yes.
Okay, you guys stand up.
Yes.
Stand up. Yeah, I can't say. But usually, we're on that after five or six holes. But I had more fun. Okay, very good. Well done. You next. Best Buddies.
Well, good evening. I'm Tom Kellness, Principal of Libertyville High School. And I stand up here representing not just Libertyville High School, but Vernon Hills as well. Because as we talked about, different types of programs at our school that we are very proud of, we thought about programs we would want to educate the board and our community about. And our Best Buddies program was one of the first ones that came to mind. We have a very remarkable and awesome Best Buddies program at both Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School. Tonight, you are going to hear from the two co-presidents of the Libertyville High School Best Buddies. The Vernon Hills Best Buddies president was invited as well, but she's out sick today with a cold, so hopefully she's on the mend. But I'm going to introduce two seniors at Libertyville High School. Maggie Hutchins, come on up. Is one of our co-presidents, and Colleen Mullins is our other co-president. Both of them are seniors, and they're going to share with you some information about Best Buddies, but also some information they learned at a state, at the statewide Best Buddies Conference that they actually, at Libertyville, came and shared with our administrative team about ways that we could design and create programs in our school. And so, they knocked the socks off our administrative team there. We learned a lot from listening to their presentation, and we wanted them to have the opportunity to share it with our community this evening. So without further ado, Colleen and Maggie. Yeah, you can.
Pass it around.
Absolutely.
Hi, I'm Maggie. I'm a senior, and I've been a part of Best Buddies since my sophomore year. So first of all, thank you guys for having us today. Colleen and I are really excited to talk to you about something that's really close to both of our hearts.
Like you said, I'm Colleen, and I'm also the co-president this year. I was president last year as well, and I have been involved in Best Buddies all four years of high school. So Best Buddies is an international organization, and this is its 30th year as an organization, and it focuses on four main goals, which are one-to-one friendships, integrated employment, inclusive living, and leadership development. And at Vernon Hills and Libertyville High School Best Buddies, we focus on one-to-one friendships. So this kind of goes into how the Libertyville chapter works, and I'm not sure exactly how it works at Vernon Hills, but it should be in a similar model. So the term that the Best Buddies International Organization coins for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities through this club are buddies. So part of our club is focused around our buddies. We have three amazing faculty advisors this year. The presidents and vice presidents of our club, we got two over there, and we have our board members as well, and our peer buddies. Peer buddies are non-disabled peers who want to be really involved in the club. And what they do is they go through an application process, and they're matched in a one-to-one or two-to-one friendship with a disabled peer. And also, we have our associate members, which are non-disabled peers who want to be involved in Best Buddies, but aren't matching that one-to-one friendship, and it's less of a time commitment if they have a busy schedule. We have all-chapter meetings every other Thursday, and so things we do then, last Thursday, we had a Halloween party, and so everybody dressed up, and we played different types of games like freeze dance. And we also have board meetings once a month, and those involve planning the different events we do throughout the month. And we also have peer buddy events where both the buddies and peer buddies are invited to an outside-of-school event like laser tag or bowling. And so the overall mission of Best Buddies is to promote inclusion, and it's to establish a space where people can form friendships with people other than themselves and get to know each other better. So like I said before, Vernon Hills and LHS, we focus on one-to-one friendships. So as Maggie mentioned before, we have our peer buddies, and we also have our Best Buddies officers, who also apply and go through an interview process. We also have a peer buddy training before our peer buddies are matched with their buddies. This is just, so we can go over the disabilities that some of our buddies in our club have, so that we know how to interact with our buddies and promote inclusion with them, and just for disability awareness, expectations of being a peer buddy, and also just helpful tips with them. We have a match party, which, these are some pictures up here from. And this is when our peer buddies and buddies find out who they're paired with, and it's always a super exciting time. And we have peer buddy events, as Maggie mentioned before, which is when peer buddies and buddies all get together in a group and hang out together. And then the, but the peer buddies also hang out with their buddies outside of school on their own. We also do a lot of fundraising throughout the year to raise money for our Super Fun Activities and like our Best Buddies Carnival that we put on every February. And one of the fundraisers we're doing right now is this awesome t-shirt, and it's actually on the web store right now, so if you want one, you guys can go get one on the web store. So one event that we do that is in conjunction with both the Vernon Hills chapter and the Mundeline chapter is our Best Buddies Prom. Here are some fun pictures from last year. And so Vernon Hills actually has hosted the past couple proms, which has been wonderful. And I'm currently working with the Best Buddies president at both of those schools to try to combine our clubs more, because a lot of the buddies are friends with the buddies from other schools from their outside activities, like Special Olympics. So we're trying to figure out fun ways to get everybody together in a larger group every once in a while. So switching gears a little bit, we're now going to talk about, Colleen and I are both part of Integrated Gym both last year and this year, which is a PE class offered at both LHS and Vernon Hills High School. And yeah, so we're going to talk about why we think it should be called Inclusive Gym. So I, as Dr. Kaye mentioned, I attended the National Best Buddies Leadership Conference over the summer. And in one of the meetings, we discussed the difference between the word inclusion and integration. And that's something that really stuck with me, because our gym class that we do here is my favorite class of the day. It's so much fun, and it really is an inclusive space, and I thought the name should match that to demonstrate the kind of environment we're trying to set for everybody. So this is the graphic that they showed us at the conference. And so the green dots are the people who would be considered the majority, and the different colored dots would be, in this case, the disabled peers. This model can also apply to a lot of other situations, but for now, I'm just going to use it in the Best Buddies context. And so in an integrated space, you can see the buddies or the kids in the special education program are invited to join gym class. They're in the room, they're doing, they're in the same space, but they aren't necessarily doing the same activities. They're all linked together in a different group, whereas that inclusive bubble at the top, which is what our gym class is right now, it really is an inclusive space. Everybody's doing the same things, everyone feels like they can contribute. So some examples of how our Integrated Gym Class is an inclusive gym class is, so last year, we had a couple, a couple of my friends had muscular dystrophy, so they were in wheelchairs. So when we did the basketball unit, they were not given an alternate assignment. They got to fully participate and score points for their teams. And the way we did that was, our wonderful teacher, Mr. Gores, had basketball hoops hanging from the basketball hoop, so they could shoot at a lower range and still score points. Also, we did the Butler Lake Walk. I'm not sure if Vernon Hills has something similar, but we do that. And you'll notice, if you watch us walking, it's not just Colleen and I who are in a lot of the same classes outside of Integrated Gym, walking together. It's everyone's really mixing and mingling with people who are different than themselves, and it's just not really bunched up by people who you already know. And then when we play tennis, my personal favorite, there is a couple of the buddies who are in Integrated Gym Class. It's a new space, being outside, playing tennis. Sometimes it's new and overwhelming, so a lot of times, one student will want to go to the far court and be not as all up in the action. And there's always someone who goes and joins him so he can rally back and forth, but not in such an overwhelming environment. And so that is an example of how it is this first bubble here and not the second one. So it is an inclusive space. So up here is the definition of inclusion and integration. As you can see, the definitions themselves are actually pretty similar. However, as Maggie mentioned before, the applications are not similar. And as she said, our gym class is very inclusive, because our buddies and our teens without intellectual developmental disabilities are all interacting together. It's no one in separate groups, everyone's together. So they really are different. So here are some examples of how the applications of the two are different in the gym model, and it can be applied to other spaces as well. But in an inclusive setting, there's a commitment to working alongside non-disabled peers. Everyone is engaged and encouraged that everyone has something to contribute, and there are the same activities for everyone, whereas the opposite in an integrated model, in an integrative space, the buddies would have to adjust to the system. The system is not adapted for them, and they're not getting the same experience. So they'd be separated, doing a separate activity. They wouldn't be able to play basketball, because those hula hoops weren't there, so they would be just tossing a beach ball back and forth out to the side, which is not getting that same gym, Super Fun Basketball experience. And like I said, there would be separate activities. So when I was looking for more examples of how to phrase the difference between an integrated space and an inclusive space, I came across this really interesting article from the California Department of Social Services. And so some of the keywords that showed the difference really well is the inclusive example is boxed in yellow there. And so in an integrated space, it's implying that there's something wrong with the minority and that they need to change the way they function in order to succeed in the regular space. And the child is just going to school, they're just going to gym class. Whereas in an inclusive space, it's recognized already that all children are different, and it is, the class is working to meet the individual needs of all people, and they're participating in school. And I really believe that our gym class is already doing that. The curriculum does not need to change at all. It's just the name needs to match what we are accomplishing. So in the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, the United Nations purposefully chose the word inclusion for, to illustrate their global goals for persons with disabilities, not integration, which shows that inclusion just really is the correct word to use here. So I truly believe from my experiences at Libertyville High School that we are an inclusive school, and I'm sure a lot of people from Vernon Hills would agree that Vernon Hills is that way as well. I've seen inclusion in many places besides Best Buddies. I know Libertyville has started a new equity team this year, and so I know a couple of my friends received little letters in the mail that gave them, if they clicked the little box on the PSAT saying they identify as Latino or Hispanic, and so they got a letter in the mail that let them know all the scholarship opportunities they have going into college. And there's also Random Mexicanist Club, which I'm involved in, which is also working to make our school a more inclusive place. So Libertyville is very inclusive, and I'm very proud to have attended here in the past four years. And yeah, so that's why Colleen and I are here to talk to you about the difference between integration and inclusion and why we love Best Buddies so much. Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions for us about this?
Can you introduce the other folks that are here, or can they introduce themselves?
Hi, my name is Rachel Bond, and I'm co-vice president this year. I've been involved in Best Buddies on and off since freshman year, and I've been a peer buddy since junior year. One of my peer buddies, or one of my buddies actually goes to Vernon Hills now. So I've been able to meet a lot of new people and make a lot of new friends, which has been an awesome experience.
My name's Lexi Hugdahl, and I'm a senior. And I became involved with Best Buddies last year after hearing all of the great experiences. I wanted to be involved, and last year, I just had such a great experience. I'm now a board member, and I'm also a peer buddy. And like Maggie said, I'm also in Random Mexicanist Club, and we're vice presidents, presidents together. And I am just, I think we all agree that inclusion is just a great word for this. The program is so amazing, and it just is such a great experience for everyone involved, so thank you.
Does anyone else have any additional questions or comments about the whole concept or what Best Buddies is doing? Have you heard of the schools?
Great, great presentation. What is, is there a follow-up? I mean, you're, if I understand, you're asking that this course be changed from Integrated Gym to Inclusive Gym, is that?
Yes, so that's one thing I wanted to highlight that I think, and I hope you as a board are very proud of, is that when we do curriculum review and curriculum audits, students and community members are able to contribute to that process. So the students came to me with the proposal, and now that proposal is going through a formal process where we have to look at the name that's proposed. We met these students, Maggie met with the PE chair and her teacher and talked about that. She came and presented at our building leadership team meeting. And then we're looking at, we have limitations on the names that we can use for classes because of it has to link up with state-approved titles, so that there's unification across how you name something. So we're doing that research right now. And while inclusive PE might be a challenge for us in the short term, because the state doesn't have that name approved, we're looking at ways that we could incorporate that into a title or contact the state about ultimately creating that so that we can link to it. Is that a fair summary of what we're at?
Yeah, definitely.
Great, I mean, my comments are, once again, I always admire seeing these kinds of presentations, because we do spend so much time focusing on, I'll just call again, the reading, writing, arithmetic stuff. And I'm so proud of you guys for these things, because this is a lot of work to do this, and I admire your passion and, you know, I just, I'm amazed at what you're, what you do, and I just think it just sets you up so well for all the things that you're going to face once you leave, leave LHS or VHHS. So you guys should feel very proud of yourselves in what you're doing. And I'm all for taking on the state, we can't fix us.
I'd be, I'd be happy to work with, with you, you know, work with our legislators, work with ISBE. Go ahead, Rehan.
We, we are actually scheduled to talk about that tomorrow, and there certainly is some flexibility with what the Illinois Course Code says and what we're allowed to do as districts. So you'll probably be seeing something at the November committee meeting.
I was going to say, if not, just send these two young ladies down to Springfield and look.
Again, let's make sure it's, geez, what we want. I mean, this would be one I'd say, let's not settle. If we got what we need to, great. If not, bring them on.
I was just going to thank you for not only educating us about the program, but I can't let the opportunity pass to also thank you for doing something that is so consistent with our daring mission and our vision for what this district is all about. Not only for when you are here in school, but what you will take with you and what all the participants will take with them out into the world when they become global citizens. So thank you.
I just, I also wanted to say, one of the things I really appreciated about this is the, just the idea in our culture right now, where words are thrown around and often very carelessly, that this just really shows that words matter. And even in a case where, it's not like there was a bad, a word that was wrong. It's just, there's, there's a better word. Let's use it, and let's think about that with the words we use. And I'd be open to hear that, you know, there's a better, maybe a better term for that or a better way to think about it. So thank you so much for already being aware of that and bringing that to, you know, for us to hear.
And that was the other point I was going to highlight in closing, is that this, this graphic, which Maggie and Colleen presented, sort of shows an evolution in our society through history and how historically we may have excluded. We excluded different populations of people, and then we moved to segregation as a nation, and then integration. And while now I think our students are leaders in leading for, using our daring mission and being on the forefront of creating inclusive environments. And so after they presented to our leadership team meeting, some of our discussion was, where are we as adults identifying areas where we're integrated and where can we move for greater inclusion? And I think what you may hear from us, whether it's other students who come in or different staff members, are the numerous areas where we are as a district, talking about equity and inclusion for all of our students, and some of the ways that that may alter and change some of the programs, classes, clubs, activities, and sports that we offer. So this is definitely a work in progress, and we were just ecstatic that in this case, like in many others, our students are leading the way.
And again, it also shows the value. I think you said you went to the, was it a national conference in the summertime?
Yes.
I mean, what a, what a great thing, right?
Yeah, it was really cool. They were, thank you. I got to meet so many people from, basically it was the presidents from every single chapter, or almost every single chapter in the entire United States, extending it to Ireland. I know some people from Hong Kong were there. Super cool to see how, I didn't even know how widespread this club was. I really only knew the Libertyville view of it, that the one-to-one friendships, we're going and playing, playing laser tag and painting pumpkins. Everything's great. I didn't know they offer opportunities for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities to become motivational speakers and find employers that are accepting and all these other really interesting values.
Look, can I ask one other question? Sorry to drag this on, but it piqued my interest, because it's clear... Because it's clear they chose the right co-president. So how did they choose you guys to be co-presidents of this?
So Colleen was president last year. And she put in a nice word for me to be president this year. And then I went through an interview process as well. But do you want to talk about that a little bit?
I mean, so I was a freshman, and I immediately became involved with Best Buddies. And sophomore year, the first year I could join the board, I did. And I was actually the only underclassman on the board. Everyone else on the board was a senior. And then there was just me, the one sophomore. And so I kind of like automatically, everyone wanted me to be president because I was the only one on the board that was eligible.
Yeah.
So it was kind of an automatic thing for me.
Good for us, you were.
Right, right, right. Yeah.
I'm still a fan, by the way.
Yeah. So then I was president again this year, and more people applied. And yeah, Maggie was amazing. So she also became president.
It's much easier having two presidents. There's a lot that goes into it. So Colleen and I, when one of us has a test tomorrow, we'll kind of switch it back and forth, who's going out and buying toilet paper to wrap each other up like mummies and things like that. So yeah, it's fun.
Great job.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. All right, equally inspiring tonight. We have our updates from our six distinguished student school board representatives.
AP exam registration for first semester and full-year classes was earlier this year than in previous years. And students have now registered, and they're able to pay for their exams. And students that are taking second semester-only classes will register during second semester, so they don't have to register right now. Also, the musical Mamma Mia had a successful run this past weekend, and there are only three shows left. One is a special performance on Wednesday, October 30th, at 4:45 PM for senior citizens in the community. So you are all invited to attend that day. Also, the Cougar.
Mr. Huber, why don't you look at me?
Dr. G told me to say that.
Also, the Cougar Class Act Award Ceremony was on October 11th. And congratulations to the following recipients. Jocelyn Agwire, Ella Blaker, Nicholas Burrows, Luke Delorme, Samuel Ginster, Aaron Hernandez, Alvin Johnson, Nikita Kobalkin, Julia Martorano, Owen Ray, Ricardo Sotelo, Caden Tran, Emily Vasquez, and Shayna Weinstein. On October 16th, we had a special Daring Day. Freshmen attended the Rite Assembly, which stands for Respect, Integrity, Trust, and Experience. The students worked with senior leaders as well as staff in small groups. They then joined together in the auditorium to listen to Speaker Mike Donahue. Freshmen were also given the opportunity to share personal stories they had about overcoming adversity in their own lives. Overall, it was a very impactful day and a great bonding experience for the class of 2023. The sophomores heard from a mental health expert who discussed internet safety. They were also introduced to Cello, which is a college program, so that they could take assessments to help them place into college and career interests. Juniors had the option of taking the PSAT, which is also a National Merit Scholarship qualifying test in which many juniors did take advantage of. Seniors were able to use this day as a college day to meet with English teachers to work on their Common App essay or supplemental essay for specific universities. And they were very thankful for that opportunity. This Friday, November 1st, is an early action deadline for many colleges that Vernon Hills students are applying to. And we would like to thank Mrs. Bolito and Ms. Fuentes and the CRC for all the help that they provide us seniors. One special note is on October 8th, us reps from Vernon Hills spent the day at Libertyville High School, shadowing the reps and their schedules. And it was interesting to see a larger school than Vernon Hills and the different dynamics in the hallways or in classes. We really liked the tour of the school where we were able to see the auditorium, the backstage area, various classrooms that they use for different curriculums, and the new pool. Overall, it felt very similar to Vernon Hills with some minor differences. And we'd like to thank the administrators and teachers for allowing us this opportunity to experience Libertyville for the day. And we'd like to thank the Libertyville community for being so welcoming and kind on our visit.
I'm going to start off by talking about all of our sports. So starting off, congratulations to freshman Lexi Schulman for earning All-State Honors by finishing in fifth place at the IHSA Girls Golf Finals. It's an amazing accomplishment, and we look forward to seeing what else she does in the years to come. Rohan Basudeva also made it to the state finals for boys golf. So congratulations to him as well. Girls Cross Country recently earned their four straight conference championship. They have won every year since joining the CSL. They also just won the St. Viator Regional Championship with four runners earning medals. Our boys runners made it to sectionals as well. Good luck to both teams as they continue their season at the Fenton Sectional on Saturday. Congratulations to the girls tennis team on winning the Vernon Hills IHSA Sectional. It was the first time in school history that all six sectional qualifiers made it to the state finals. What a great season for them. Lastly, boys soccer just captured the Deerfield Regional Title. They play again on Tuesday for the sectional semifinal. Good luck to them. Ms. Fuentes and Mrs. Bolito, along with Spanish-speaking students from CLC and an admissions rep from the University of Illinois, presented information about college to Spanish-speaking families this month. It was a very informational presentation, all about this stressful college process. It was very helpful to everyone that went. Two PE field trips took place recently. Mr. Bargani and Mr. Ricelli took the junior and senior leaders to Covenant Harbor and Lake Geneva to work on their team-building skills. The junior leaders found it to be a good experience to practice being out of their comfort zones. And the senior leaders enjoyed reconnecting with each other and brushing up on their leadership skills together after separating to lead their individual classes this year. Outdoor Adventure 2 went on a camping trip to Devil's Lake with Mr. Micali. This was a great opportunity for them to practice their skills that they learned in class in a real-life scenario. VHGIF ambassadors presented a lesson last Friday called VHGIF Thanks. The message was all about expressing our gratitude to those who mean the most to us. Students took time to reach out to teachers, family members, friends, or anyone else important to them to say thank you for the impact that they have made in their lives. The lesson really touched everyone. Students in human anatomy and physiology had the opportunity to watch a live stream of an open-heart surgery through a program put on by the Museum of Science and Industry. As they watched, students were able to communicate with everyone in the OR and had the opportunity to ask them questions about the surgery itself, what it takes to be a surgeon, or different career options in the medical field. It was a very interesting and immersive experience that many students winced at the sight of the patient's chest being cut into.
Okay. So congratulations to chemistry teacher, Ms. Tau, on being selected for the University of Chicago's Outstanding Educator Award. Each year, entering first-year students are asked to nominate an educator who has influenced them, challenged them, or helped them along the path toward intellectual growth. They receive letters from hundreds of students inspired by teachers who have changed the course of their lives, who taught them to reimagine text, dive deeper into problem-solving, and think beyond the borders of the classroom. Our homecoming participation this year was amazing. We had over 100 seniors participate for Powderpuff. The homecoming dance had 894 students in attendance. This week could not be successful without the support of our caring staff and amazing buildings and grounds crew. VHHS, wind ensemble and conductor Mr. Sandell have partnered with the prominent band composer and arranger, Dr. Paul Noble, to produce recordings of many of his newer works. Middle school music students came to VHHS to play with the high school musicians. VHHS hosted its Career Fair, where organizations were able to set up booths in the fieldhouse, and students explored different career paths during their classes and study halls. There were also breakout sessions where speakers gave presentations on their respective careers and answered student questions. Two of Vernon Hills' math teachers are using a unique grading system being called standard grading system. Last year, Mr. Perdon assigned categories of skill such as mastery, approaching mastery, progressing, and beginning to assess each student's level in his pre-calculus classes. The idea is to focus the learning on understanding rather than grades. Students in these classes, including myself, received no points or percentages on any assignments or assessments. While this may seem beneficial to some, other students seemed to be uncomfortable with the idea. They grew anxious about not having any number grades in Power School and all masteries instead of an A with a more specific evaluation between 90% and 100%. However, this year, Mr. Perdon has adapted to a similar system that Mr. Cornes, who is also teaching calculus, is using. The two teachers now use a grading scale of 10 points on assessments. When students receive tests back, they will not receive points earned or taken based on each question, but based on the overall test instead. This means there are no points attached to each question, but the teacher evaluates the mistakes and give a score between 1 and 10 accordingly. This is beneficial to many students who struggle with having points taken off on basic minor errors in previous math classes. Under this system, the goal is to show a well-developed understanding of the skill and learning target rather than to focus on grading points for each question. This October, our school magazine, The Scratching Post, releases first issue of the year. Students in journalism classes worked hard to create this issue. The October magazine featured news articles about senior quotes and a features article comparing LHS and Vernon Hills High School spirit, school spirit cultures. We are excited for more issues to come.
So we're also going to start off with our visit to Vernon Hills High School. So this past Tuesday, we threw Libertyville reps to travel to Vernon Hills to shadow our reps there. We were able to observe the life health class, consumer management, AP Spanish, journalism, speech, and psychology. We had a great experience there throughout the day and have many positive things to report back. To hone in on one class specifically, we really saw the daring statement in action in the journalism class. Their teacher led activities that encouraged students to be more aware of what their own story is told and what stories they were covering. And whether or not they were capturing stories that were also a little different from the perspectives that they themselves hold, which we really appreciated getting to see. We also noticed a couple of things that are different than how things are run at LHS. For one, we noticed that the classrooms were set up differently. And for one thing, had a lot more desks and chairs that were rollable, which we felt like created a more collaborative environment. At LHS, a majority of classrooms still have normal desks set up in rows, or, excuse me, set up in rows. Whereas at Vernon Hills, more desks are facing each other. While LHS is currently in the transition to introducing more of this dynamic classroom-like material, we look forward to seeing that continue on a wider scale. Another thing that we saw was the consumer ed requirement. At Vernon Hills, everybody is required to take a consumer management class or a personal finance class in order to graduate. Whereas at LHS, economics also fulfills that requirement. When we observed their consumer class, we felt that the content that they covered was extremely valuable and feel that LHS would stand to benefit from a similar policy of not including economics in fulfilling the consumer requirement. When we raised this question to other students at Libertyville, one common issue that we heard was that by allowing ECON to fulfill the consumer requirement, students are pushed to take an extra AP class when they may not otherwise need it because it can somehow be a GPA boost. But just to sum up the day as a whole, we really appreciated the opportunity to get to spend time with our Vernon Hills reps, to grab another lunch with them, and to meet all the teachers and staff at the school. So for a few school ongoings, on October 16th, we had the Daring Day. Juniors were at school to take the optional PSAT, and the other grades got a chance to participate in this year's Daring Day. Freshmen and sophomores participated in a variety of activities, such as the Art Impact Project and Growth Mindset Activities. Seniors got the day for college preparation of their applications with help from the CRC and the Right Place. A few English teachers were able to stay in the MASH until noon, where many seniors got the chance to have one-on-one essay help, which was widely agreed upon to have been very helpful and much appreciated. People in sports and theater still had to come to school for regular practices and rehearsals, which was met with mixed opinions. It was tough for juniors who had the PSAT to go to a practice before the test naturally. And it was also tough if they were exhausted after taking the test to go to practice. But some people stated that they found it nice to have something to get their day started, such as a morning practice. LHS also started their annual canned food drive. And all the canned goods brought in will be going to the Libertyville Township Food Pantry. LHS is known for being a major donor to the food pantry, and we hope to keep the momentum going. One major change from last year is that the competition to see who can bring in those cans is between grade levels rather than between second-period classrooms. And this brings a fun spirit of unified competition to the school.
So LHS also kicked off their annual Wish Program last week. And Wish Leaders debuted some changes from last year. All classes will receive small families instead of being able to choose from different-sized families. And the date for purchasing gifts has been moved up to be earlier in the year. And advisors hope that this will increase organization and efficiency. Everybody is so excited for Wish Season and it's many students' favorite time of the year. So we look forward to all the fundraising and bake sales that are soon to come. French exchange students from, forgive me if I butcher this, Andrews and Renoir came to LHS for two weeks to experience American culture. And this is the second part of a French exchange program in which LHS students went to France in the summer. And they visited museums and other attractions in the city. Both the French and American participants have expressed extremely positive experiences with the program. Senior Maddie Kins explains that the French exchange program was super impactful for her personally because it really immersed her into a different culture in a way that's never happened to her before. And beyond just teaching French culture and the language, it taught her how to take risks and not be afraid while learning a new language because she's just trying to communicate with others. And moving on to sports, LHS had their last home football game on Friday, and the theme was Rock Out. The varsity team won 43 to 22, qualifying them for the state playoff, and we're so proud of them. The boys soccer team won their last game against Mundeline, 5 to 3, and this was their regional championship. Tomorrow, they're going to be playing against Palatine for the sectional semifinals. So we wish the best of luck to the team. The girls varsity tennis team got eighth place overall at the state tournament. And the girls cross-country team won first place in varsity regionals on Saturday in Lake Forest. We're so proud of all of our athletes and all of their accomplishments. Onto clubs and activities. Our Model U1 went to the Washington University Model United Nations Conference in St. Louis. And since the group got to take a school bus to drive there, they were able to stop at a couple of sites along the way. Junior Drew Benoit and senior Drew Hopkins both won awards. And for many attendees who were there for their first conference, they reported having a great first experience. LHS went to Homewood-Flossmore and Schaumburg Debate Tournaments with outstanding successes. At Homewood-Flossmore, sophomore Kate Gerber and Sarah Dowden both received awards. At Schaumburg, our very own senior Kat Corless. And juniors Cheryl J. Kibbin-Zana-Coxey and freshman James Monahan also won awards. Catsycan's Hunger, formerly known as Libertyville's UNICEF Club, hosted a successful Spike Bowl fundraiser to raise money for Thanksgiving meals for those in need, raising $200 in total towards their goal. And Libertyville's Environmental Action Force is planting a garden in the courtyard. And they're planting the whole thing with native Illinois plant species. So they're currently cleaning the non-native grass plants and will begin planting this native species in November. The school is extremely excited to see the finished courtyard and the prospect for another outdoor classroom in addition to the one that junior Jake Short created for his Eagle Scout project.
Onto, excuse me, onto fine arts. We have this year's school musical, All Shook Up. It had two amazing performances on Saturday and Sunday. This year's show is performing for two weeks, which is super, super nice. So it gives two more chances for people to see the show on Friday and Saturday this weekend. Last Friday, the cast of All Shook Up went to see Vernon Hills musical, Mamma Mia. And Vernon Hills came to LHS on Sunday to see All Shook Up. So it was super cool seeing both schools' theater programs kind of connecting and meeting each other. In orchestra, we had the Fright Night Concert on October 17th in the Genasium. We spoke with senior Isabel Greenberg about the concert, and she described it as unlike any other orchestra concert that they perform during the year. They get to perform pieces from specific subsets of music. The director, Mr. Marino, also continued the tradition of being carried onto stage into a coffin and jumping out just as the Grim Reaper. We want to congratulate the orchestra for all of their hard work and for a great concert. In ILM MEA, 32 students from choir, band, and orchestra have been selected to participate in the Illinois Music Education Association District 7 Festival. More than 100 high schools participate in this audition-based festival, and it's the highest individual honor a student can receive. So we're extremely proud of the Wildcats who made it. In health and wellness, we have Red Ribbon Week starting up this week. And it's all about the awareness and prevention of use of drugs, tobacco, and alcohol. This year's LHS students have expressed in the Red Ribbon Survey that they want more information on vaping and how to help others with vaping addictions. This week, there will be stands outside of each day at the lunch and having information about all of these different topics. And this Friday, there will be the annual health fair in the library. Snowflake Training, in partner with Vernon Hills High School, has started, happened last week. And they are ready for this Friday to meet with the middle schoolers. The achievements that we have had this month is that two LHS students have been recognized in the National Hispanic Recognition Program. Grace Henderson and Mark Plonket scored in the top 2.5% among Hispanic and Latino students for the PSAT test takers in the region. So congratulations to them.
Great job, yes. Awesome.
Congratulations.
Yeah, no, I actually have a follow-up. You said something very interesting in that, for Libertyville, actually can't say this. And that is, we allow. and that is, we allow economics to pass for consumer finance or personal finance or consumer ed. And frankly, I'd just like to understand how, when that decision was made, this probably goes, how that was made, because I'm, I'm pretty certain that personal finance or consumer ed is a lot different than AP macro or microeconomics, 100% different. And I hate to see people go bankrupt in life because they didn't have a basic financial class because they were so concerned with the GPA. So, can somebody just at least help me understand?
So first of all, Vernon Hills, Vernon Hills has the same requirements. So, you, students who take AP Econ here are, they fulfill that graduation requirement multiple ways. One of the ways is through an econ class, AP Econ in this class.
And that requirement, what's that requirement?
So that's a state, that's a state-level graduation requirement. So it's fulfilled, like I said, multiple ways, and there's three that we have in the district. It's been that way.
Forever?
Yeah.
And it's a common practice in many districts that AP Economics fulfills that graduation requirement, so it's not unique to Libertyville High School or District 128.
But no doubt, they're considerably different curricula, but they all fulfill that same requirement, so.
Do we have to allow that? I mean, I guess my question is, do we have to allow that? Just because it fulfills something doesn't make it necessary. And again, we could always debate it later on as a committee and things of that nature, but at the end of the day, when we have kids who don't know how to balance, write a check, one, okay? Two, balance a checkbook. Three, do a job interview. You know, those are pretty important life skills. And again, this is just me, we talked about this when I came on the board, about being a total holistic student, auto-shod consumer finance. We don't just need to take 19 AP classes to be successful and to be deemed successful, in my opinion. I'm glad you said something because it sounds like, what do the kids feel, though? I mean, that's, that's what's important because, you know, we're always, the race to success always thinks GPA, GPA, GPA. How about checkbooks and their job interviews and things like that?
I'm currently in the consumer class, and I actually have found it very helpful because my teacher has taught us a lot about budgeting and what taxes and insurance is like. And something I wanted to add is that when the LHS reps came to our school, Maya noted that she took consumer last year as a junior, and at Vernon Hills, it's only offered as a senior course. And in talking, we think that it would be a really good option to offer as a junior course as well because, for example, we just did a unit on setting up our FAFSA accounts and all about how we can plan to save for college, and a lot of students will take consumer second semester senior year, and by then it can be a little bit too late to start planning for that. So if students get the opportunity to learn those skills earlier in their high school careers, it could be more beneficial for them.
Yeah, and I took macro my sophomore year back when it was just macro and not econ. And when I went to Abby's consumer class, like, I just noticed that there's so much that you miss out on when you take econ. Econ's obviously an interesting class, but like, I will admit, like, a vast majority of my high school career, I have been very caught up with, you know, trying to get the best grades and the best GPA because, you know, that's always seen as the path to college, but there are so many just life skills that you miss out on when you're not in a class like that. And like, honestly, just one day in that class, I learned a lot that I just didn't know before.
Yeah, I have to be completely honest. I, like, I was one of the many people that took macro, like, in the last semester that was offered as a semester course because, like, I was really blinded by the GPA boost that it offers. I really have no personal interest in econ. I just found the exposure interesting. But a lot of students that I've talked to have said that they also took econ because, like, they found it a beneficial class, like, for their GPA, even if they aren't personally interested in, interested in it. But like, after having taken the class, they may not have felt that they got as much of a personal benefit out of it as they would have if they just took consumer and, like, address the fact that, like, it might not be as much credit in their GPA.
I am taking AP Macroeconomics second semester senior year. I decided to take that because I have an interest in pursuing a business field, so I am applying as a business major in college. So I feel like AP Macroeconomics would be the best option for me. Personally, as a senior, it's been really hard to fit all the classes I want into my schedule, so I really do not have space for another class. So it is extremely beneficial to me and other seniors that economics fulfills that requirement because there is physically no space in my schedule for a consumer class.
Okay, so I just, I think this is awesome. One more comment? Yeah.
Hi, I have a very similar opinion, Ella. I agree that econ really does not go into those life skills at all. I'm in AP Economics, AP Economics, which is a full-year course right now, and I am taking it because I also want to pursue a major in business. And I would not have had room to take AP Economics in addition to a consumer class. So I think it's, for me, it was personally helpful to have it fulfill that requirement, otherwise I wouldn't be able to take all the classes I'm interested in because my schedule is so packed. But I agree with all you guys that it is important to learn how to balance a checkbook and all those other things.
I think, a couple of things. I think that breadth and depth of the discussion here really indicates why the state allowed economics to, you to take the option of taking economics and getting your consumer requirement. We haven't have always had a consumer requirement in the state, I mean, you know, for like 50 or 60 years. So that's been an addition at the state level at some point, and so to balance those two things, I'm sure after a lot of input from schools across the state, the students stay allowed, as they do in some areas, an additional way to get that credit for those of you that may not be able to fit that into your schedule. Also, for students that are in the fine arts, if you're taking band or orchestra or choir and you're taking a fairly rigorous student program, there is no space in your schedule for other electives. There's just no place to put them. So that becomes perhaps problematic as well. But Kevin, your point is still well-taken in the world that we're living in today. For kids to have that basic knowledge, as you guys have talked about, and some of you have seen in visiting, those classes becomes, you know, very important. So, Rhea, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add?
No, I think what, what we're hearing, what we're hearing tonight from students is exactly why we've talked about the need to include students on our curriculum review committee, and we have plans to do that as part of Daring, to continue to look at all of our offerings through the lens of what our students tell us, and it certainly is true that they don't all speak with one voice, just like we heard tonight, that what works for some students doesn't work for others. But considering their needs and their voices as we make these decisions is increasingly important.
And I'd say, so again, this was awesome. I think this is probably the 15th class of student reps we had, but this is the kind of interchanging feedback I think we've been looking for, for 15 years, so kudos to you guys. But this would be a good topic for a future discussion, I think, to follow up on your point, Kevin. And I guess the thing I would throw out there is, are there other ways that we can achieve this? It may not be another course. I mean, if what we're hearing is people are graduating from our two high schools and they've never, never had to worry about creating a budget or writing a check or, I don't know, buying stock or whatever else.
Taxes and insurance.
Yeah, maybe there's a club that could be created that, you know, you could just do the Cliff Notes version of it instead of what you do. I wouldn't want to take away from the course it's offered, but it'd be interesting to see what other options we have to meet the need here because I'm sensing some real passion around this topic, and I think this is great.
There's also the potential to, there's also the potential to kind of review the standards in the AP Econ courses as well to address how and why those courses cover the consumer requirement.
Yeah, oh, I, for one, I wouldn't discount the value of micro and macroeconomics in today's world as well.
Right, right. And so incorporating some of those other standards within the course is something that we can talk about in a little.
Yeah.
Or to like, achieve that whole consumer information, like, like creating a budget and checks and stuff. I know in my, I went to Middle School South and IMS classes, we had a whole unit on budgeting, and I actually learned all that stuff in eighth grade, which is still nice because I'm doing consumer right now, and I obviously have forgotten some stuff, so I'm getting very nice refreshers, and it's more relevant to me right now. But I do think that if the high schools were to offer consumer, for Vernon Hills more specifically, consumer classes for maybe as juniors and seniors instead of just for seniors, it would be a really good way because it sounds like people are just struggling to fit it in their schedules and giving them more of a, like, flexible time, I think that class might be more beneficial.
All right, great job. We'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Well, and Pat, before we go on, I think, you know, as Rita indicated, as we do our curriculum review process and including student voices, so we'll be able to share some of those conversations with all of you at committee meetings and then maybe highlight some of it here moving forward. And that's going to be pretty cool. As we've already seen tonight, we didn't really plan for the dialogue tonight, and the dialogue has been great, so it'll be a lot of fun, I think, to watch that develop.
And by the way, these, I mean, these are the kind of discussions, like, you won't believe this, but it won't be too long from now, it'll be springtime, and you guys will be handing off the baton to the next six people. You know, I would ask you to make sure they're aware of their, the full breadth of their responsibilities, which is bigger than just telling us what's going on in the high school, okay? I mean, it includes all these things about, you know, what are the, what are the gaps if you see, what are the things you wish from a student's perspective you wish we could do? Because the worst that we're ever going to say is no can do, right? But so far, I'm seeing a lot of very good. All right, so wonderful job.
And if we could just offer congratulations to Kat on your debate award and to Ella on the Cougar Class Award. We're very proud of you.
And kudos to both schools. I mean, I know Don and I were at Mamma Mia, I wasn't able to get to the Libertyville play, but the talent in the two high schools is just unbelievable, and it's just so much fun to watch.
We're still at this weekend, so.
Let it be known that some of that talent actually goes on to bigger and better things, as the proud mother to my left would, would, would probably be willing to share some time. So, great training for your future endeavors. All right? Great job. All right, you guys are free to go. I'm sure you have a lot of things to do.
Oh, before you go, we have some, I think, social studies students with us, probably history? History? Government. So why don't you stand up because we see several of you at every meeting, and these are, and what, are you all from the same school tonight?
Libertyville.
Off of Libertyville tonight, and who's your teacher?
Mr. Duffy.
Mr. Duffy.
I have a brand.
Who do you have again?
Brand.
Laura Brand.
Okay, great.
I as well have Laura Brand.
Okay, great. All right, well.
I didn't, actually.
And do you see how we did this? Now you're on video because we taped the board meetings. So, nobody can question your signature because you will be on tape if you are here. So, okay, yeah, you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for coming.
Good job, ladies.
You don't like, you look, you look as comfortable as you like.
Not for a dull moment. Okay, next.
I think it's me?
Uh, let me just do two other. All right, number one. All right, so two things. One, the committee meetings are November 4th, so they're early this month because of Thanksgiving Christmas. I hope to get back in time. I will not be here for lunch, all right? So anybody, anybody who would like to volunteer to have lunch with this inspiring group, let me know tonight, we'll make sure Carol Nelson's been done, all right? These guys are, they're fantastic to eat, actually, because all of the enthusiasm you see tonight carries right over to the lunch table, and it's a lot of fun.
It's 11:30 AM at Baker Square, so just let Pat let me know that you want to hang out with us, and if there are more than one, you can do that, too. Be happy to have more than one of you there.
Okay, second thing, I think everybody got a copy of the schedule for the tri-conference with all of the presentations and stuff. I would like to bring that to probably P&amp;P or whatever one of the committee meetings, just to coordinate who's going to what, okay? There's a bunch of us going, there are a whole lot of things, many of them are often at the same time, and I just want to make sure we don't have five people at one thing and nobody at other. So if you could look at your agendas, kind of highlight the things that you think are worth somebody going to, and then we can have a brief discussion and just make sure we get the right coverage, all right? Because there were a number of good topics on there, there were a number of safety-related topics, or some on boards and board governance and all that, but I just want to make sure we kind of divide and conquer.
They don't stand office on Saturday?
Yeah.
Saturday's kind of the main day.
Saturday, Friday are the, are the half-days or all-day? Kind of the pre, that's almost like pre-conference. And then Saturday, when those of you that have been able to attend have attended, you've really picked out what you want to go to on Saturday, depending on how long you can stay on Saturday, if you're staying all day, or if you're staying over Saturday night, you do the half-day on Sunday. So, yeah, Saturday is kind of the main day, and then Friday, Carol will put the schedule together Friday evening for us. So, yes, we can talk.
Let's just talk, because I looked, there were a lot of good things, and there are a few things I'm sure that all, everybody's going to want to go to, all right? And so we'll have to just kind of draw straws and see how we split up, okay? But it'll be a pretty good agenda overall. Okay, next, superintendent's report. The rest of this just seems so routine after the first part.
It doesn't, I can't even make it sound more exciting. So, anyway, except the student recognition. Well, this month is a special month, and I'm not going to ask you to raise your hand and tell me if you know why it's a special month, but this is actually National Principals' Appreciation Month. And so, we always do this at the board meeting, and we happen to have two principals in our school district, and I just want to say again, really, the board already knows, of course, but on behalf of us and to our communities, that we have two world-class principals leading our two world-class high schools. And we're very blessed to have them here. We appreciate the work that they do, leadership and management, and then working as part of the district team as well. And this district could not be better positioned with the leadership it has at our two buildings as well as the district office, of course. So, Tom and John, we have, Pat and I have a couple of little certificates to give you just as a way of appreciating the great work that you do for us, and just know I'm speaking on behalf of all of us how much we appreciate both of you. So, congratulations.
Let's see, you're a town. No. Tom, come on over here, let Barry get a picture.
Background like here, maybe.
So, I just want to, I want to just follow, I'm going to tell you, what amazes me about some of what we saw tonight is it's very clear to me that our student school board reps feel very comfortable bringing things up and making their feelings known, okay? And I believe that doesn't just happen everywhere, all right? So I really want to give you guys, and really everybody in administration, but you two guys in building a particular credit for establishing a culture, okay, that I think is really just feeding our students. I mean, we know technically how good you guys are at what you do, and we can't understate how important that is, but what's really impressive to me is what, what you've been able to accomplish from the standpoint of creating a culture where our students, I think, you know, I'll say, really feel like they can thrive, okay? And to see them today, to really kind of look to you guys and say, well, you know what, but this is how we'd really like to see it, I just don't believe that happens everywhere. And I'm just really proud of you guys for being able to do that. So, I just want to add my thanks for that.
Okay, good news. Okay, so we can, we continue with good news. So District 128 has received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. The award is given for the district's comprehensive annual financial report, which we refer to as CAPR, and is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. Its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. Congratulations to Assistant Superintendent Dan Stanley and his business department on this achievement. Dan, great job. The District 128 Special Olympians have been very busy this fall. On October 5th, two D-128 Special Olympian teams competed in the Unified Soccer Sectionals in Elgin, with the Storm Black Team winning gold and qualifying for state by winning its division, and the Storm Orange receiving silver and receiving an at-large bid to join them at the state tournament. All teams will now be competing at the state Unified Soccer Tournament in Schaumburg on November 2nd, so that's coming up this weekend. Storm Black Team members are Liam Angelos, Celia Gomez, Gillian Johnson. Storm Black Team members are Liam Angelos, Celia Gomez, Gillian Johnson, Libby Karsten, Sean Karanen, Joey Leach, Chase Miller, Chris Marosen, John O'Connor, Lily Proshatsky, Gabriel Reyes, Richana Bencott, and Mackenzie Runkie. Storm Orange Team members are Anthony Berktold, Bridget Ballaton, Alexa Donato, Nathan Ferrara, Alina Gisa, Noah Hewitt, Joseph Mallor, Jack McDonald, Danielle Parnas, Anna Scholler, Kylie Spitek, and Nicole Spitek. On October 6th, 17 of our, 17 of our Special Olympians competed at McHenry West High School in the area bocce ball tournament. At the end of the day, six D-128 athletes qualified for the state tournament to be held in Bloomington in June. Those athletes were Mackenzie Runkie, Hope Michelotti, Libby Karsten, Drew McCarthy, Steve Boglevich, and Noah Hewitt. Six D-128 Special Olympians will compete in the upcoming sectional bowling tournament to be held November 2nd in Rockford. The sectional qualifiers, who qualified at the regional tournament held in June in Addison, are Alexa Donato, Haley Dunbar, Nathan Ferrara, Joseph Mallor, Chris Marosen, and Vincent Roberts. So congratulations once again to our meeting Special Olympians and the coaching staff. LHS Swimming Coach and Retired Teacher Greg Herman was named a 2019 inductee to the Lake County High School Sports Hall of Fame and was inducted into that prestigious group on October 10. Don, with his long coaching background and participation in swimming is, knows Greg well. I think you guys would consider each other very good friends. Competed against each other and know each other well, and Don wrote Greg a really wonderful note of congratulations. So, you know, Greg's one of the good ones. So, great job. Members of the LHS Model UN team traveled to St. Louis to compete on the campus of Washington University. Drew Hopkins received outstanding position paper and honorable mention. His position was Titus Calinius, Quoister in the Joint Crisis Committee, Second Punic War Rome. Andrew Benoit received verbal commendation. His position was Anne Hidago, Mayor of Paris in La République in Marchal, Council of Ministers of France 2017. The team was accompanied by Advisors Kara Bostman and Matt Wall. And the District 128 Foundation for Learning has announced this year's recipients of the Alumni Achievement Awards. Jessica Chiarella from Vernon Hills High School class of 2005, and Sarah Potemba, Libertyville class of 1999. They will receive their honors at the big event November 8 at Mickey Fins in Libertyville. Rita, do we have a slide tonight that you wanted to show? Okay, and we did steward to pan around to that. Just a reminder for their community, the foundation's big event is, in fact, Friday, November 8, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. at Mickey Fins. This is a great event. All proceeds go to benefiting innovation grants and students in need. This is a major fundraiser for the foundation, and in the past 10 years, the foundation has given out well over $300,000 in innovation grants, has been, and really has been the tip of the spear of innovation in the district, over and beyond what the taxpayers give us. So we really hope to see everyone there that evening. Okay, next on the superintendent's report tonight is proposed 2020, 2021 school calendar. Rita has spent several meetings just reviewing the calendar after many meetings and much input into the calendar. So we are recommending the 2020-21 calendar as proposed coming out of our October committee meeting, and we would need a motion to second and then a, a.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the proposed 2020-2021 school calendar?
Rita, I have a question, and apologies for not seeing this earlier when I was really drilling down on it. What is the rationale behind the grading day on January 4th? Isn't that traditionally the last day? That, that would normally be Friday, the 18th.
Yes, we spent quite a bit of time on this calendar to attempt to more evenly balance the number of instructional days first and second semester. And you can see that, that they are in balance still. And so one of the solutions that was presented was to move the grading day to January 4th. We had a lot of conversation about that and input from, through a survey to the educators. Then there was widespread support for just moving that day to January 4th.
Was that on the calendar that we saw in committee?
Yes.
And I, again, I apologize for not seeing that. So you're essentially gonna make those kids wait two weeks for feedback on their finals? Is that, that's what, that's telling you?
Yes.
For next year. And that'll be communicated early.
Well, I get that. You're, you know, that's a long time to have them wait for their grades. I have to be honest with you, I don't know how comfortable I am with that.
I would agree that is a, it's hard to understand the benefit of simply balancing the days between the semesters when the trade-off is making the students wait for two weeks for their grades.
Well, if I understand correctly, the alternative is one less instructional day.
Right, for semester, that's correct. There'll be a whole day of instruction. It gives one more day of instruction in semester one, where there's already an imbalance between semester one and semester two. When we moved final exams several years ago, and we finally moved final exams before the holiday, because the rationale for that is we used to do finals, like, in the second week of January, so we had better balance between the two semesters.
One of the other calendars that was discussed, if you just look at the way the break falls, was, you know, breaking up the following week, and there was widespread disapproval for that solution as well. So we did, we did review quite a few options to address this, but this was the lesser of the evils in the minds of those participating. We did have parents on the community, on the committee who weighed in in regards to this solution, too.
I don't love the idea of having a break be an extra day longer either. Like getting into the habit of doing an extra day over a holiday break.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but, but some of the flux in all this really is when, like, certain years are way more complex to try to figure it out because of when things fall.
Absolutely. I've seen that.
Not necessarily setting a, like, precedent for from now on, every year it's gonna be this. But once in a while, there are funky things you have to do to, you know, at least is determined, by determined by all the different people weighing in, as Rita said, kind of the lesser of. I mean, nobody thinks that's ideal.
Were there both students who had parents on this committee?
Yeah, we're not students on the, on the committee, but parents. And, and that is something that we, incorporating students into the calendar committee is another wise move to make, given the fact that they are the most impacted by the decisions that the committee makes. There are a number of districts that schedule an institute day on the day after the return from a holiday or at the start of a second semester. That is kind of a common practice to extend for that. So it's not unusual to have a day to do school business on the day after a holiday period or at the start of a second semester. I understand the concerns in regards to students waiting, and that, that was discussed.
I'm sorry that I did not catch that.
Yeah, me, me, too.
I, I really, I wish we had discussed it in committee, because that would have been the appropriate time to ask our questions and express our concerns. So I apologize for bringing it up now.
I'm, I'm happy, yeah, we're happy to talk about it.
What is the practical reality of this? I mean, really, is, I mean, will teachers wait until after the holidays to get the kids a final exam grade? I mean, I find that a little bit surprising.
May or may not. I think the conversation at the building level is, is what, when Power School is open and available, what the results of those are, and that is something that we can continue to discuss related to this change.
As a teacher, I would really want to have all of my grades done before the break was over and then use that day to prep for second semester.
Yeah, which will probably what most do, but the system, the way it's set up like this, the system, Power School will be shut down until, because there may be some teachers that you have to.
You can't trickle in.
So most teachers would probably have their grades done, but the communication of said grades will not happen until Power School is opened up at the end of that grading day on that Monday.
The other thing at a high school level, and I've worked in for five different districts over my career, a teacher all the way down to superintendent, is there is often a day after you come back for break. Because at the high school, it's different than the elementary school because of many semester classes. So teachers are changing class loads, so they're getting schedules, they're getting, counselors are doing schedule changes for second semester. All those things that we used to be able to do, kind of when we're running, when we had finals in January, we had a two-week period running up to that, and we just kept going after that. So there's often a prep day at many high schools in the first, in some school districts, the first two days.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that the students are waiting that two weeks to get their grades.
Right.
We gotta get two weeks.
That's, that's, that's two different things. But the, the issue of the balance in the semesters is a big issue to the teachers, right? And, you know, we went through a 10-year process here to get to the point that we could move semester exams to first semester. We got a little more comfortable with that balance. But as you also know, we don't take most of the school holidays anymore. And part of the reason is to make sure that we're balanced, getting closer to balancing the days, you know, between first and second semester. So that's a big deal for, you know, in a year-long class, you can make some of those adjustments. If you're teaching semester classes, which a lot of high school classes are, and you have that semester class, first semester, and semester class, second semester, that creates a, the same class, second semester, that creates a big difference if you've got eight, nine, 10 days of difference of what you're actually covering in in that class with those students, and you're able to do that. So that's the accommodation. So that one day is kind of a big deal of instruction, particularly given the imbalance between the two semesters.
Because it really puts them off by two days.
It, it, yes, it does.
One, and one semester includes one the other.
Right, exactly. Which makes the imbalance, yeah, it's kind of a double imbalance, actually.
And, and so, you know, I have to keep in mind is the fact that until we changed the finals to before the holidays, they didn't get their grades until the second week in January. So they didn't get their, their final grade for the first semester until then.
Well, but they took the finals and got their response within a day or two. That's.
So, that's, I'm trying to understand all this Power School thing. So how was it before? I mean.
What do you mean? When they had the finals in January?
Power School has always been shut down during, until after the grading day is complete and all the grades are in.
So they have their grade on that Friday before Christmas?
And then it's, and then it's open up.
But the grading day was the Friday, like, the day before Christmas?
Yes, the day before the winter break.
Yeah, so they would still have an additional day on the, on the holiday break, it was just at the beginning, it's gonna be up. And, and when you say Power School shut down, it just, you just mean it's not open to the.
Not open.
It is, is here unique because you do a full week, you got a full week with Christmas in it here.
Yeah.
All right, so, well, let's, let's, well, let's bring for a vote, in both general reading.
Well, and, and before we go there, remember, as Rita has recounted again, and Casey, you sat on the committee for a long time, that there's a lot of this, all of these options are discussed. And the reason we have parents on the committee is so we can, you know, have their opinion on this. And as Rita has noted, it's the best of maybe the worst evils, I guess, in terms of trying to make this work. And this will be about communicating to people. We're gonna have a change next year on the calendar, and it's a result of A, B, C. And so this is what gonna, this is what's gonna happen, and we're gonna tell you in advance, okay? It's not perfect, but it's, it's the best perfect of all the options that we had to look at to try and save the integrity of that particular day.
I'm guessing the conversation with the Wednesday before Thanksgiving happens in that meeting of whether.
Yeah, didn't that screw stuff up even more then? That takes another instructional day off. Well, no, it does, right? Well, that's why.
That is in the contract, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, but that, that's.
That's part of the discussion we had with.
Right, so that screws it up even more. Well, again, if you look at this over the last two years.
Yeah, it's a balance more, yeah.
Yeah, so part of, part of all this is an accommodation for all of the factors that we've kind of highlighted maybe two weeks ago and we highlighted again tonight, and that Rita's worked through with the committee. So, yes, that Wednesday before Thanksgiving is a contractual issue, you know, at, at least the next three years. And every year going forward, you know, we're gonna have to look at the contr, we're gonna have to look at the calendar or continue to do what we've always done, statistically, holistically. Because in a year or two, it's tricky again around the holidays. So some of you, your kids might have still been in high school and we had to do split.
Split week.
All right, or we were gonna be out the day before Christmas. Okay, think about that for a minute. So we had to split the week. So we didn't go out Monday because of the way the calendar fell, was either get out the day before Christmas or split the week and go a little bit earlier. So we had like a Tuesday to, Tuesday.
One of the drafts considered was this calendar to address that issue as well. And the, the feedback from both the community members and staff was.
Very strong.
Yeah, very strong, yes.
Splitting that.
I will say that we also, you know, we condensed new teacher meetings to one day to get students starting as early as we could, given the desire to keep at first week of August available for families who wanted to take vacations at that time, because that's the week when there's no summer school and there's no practices. And so, you know, there were a lot of concerns that went into this being the solution that we arrived upon.
I, I am well aware of how hard you work on this and how much time this takes.
And that, and that, sometimes you.
My guess is we get plenty of feedback.
Yeah, I'm just thinking back to my own student and.
Yeah, no, I can appreciate that.
Like, literally, she'd be on Power School waiting to see, and to ask her to wait two weeks is kind of unfair. On, on behalf of the students, I don't, I don't love, I understand that this is the way that this worked and everything. Our contractual obligations to the teachers' union, but I don't love it.
But our only two alternatives would have been to, one, split up that week and take Monday as the grading day, or B, take out yet again another instructional day. From first semester.
Or move everything into the first week of August, which is the only week.
That's, that's true.
Only, when you talk about, like, rest and having, it's the only week that is true. You know, wouldn't have sports and, right?
And there is no, there's no way the students can find out what they got on their final exam without Power School being up and on. It's not like the college days, they're hanging on the wall and they just take out the last three digits, you know?
Right, yeah.
Well, I think the issue there is the desire for uniformity. Some, some teachers know that, but others might not. So even if you were doing that, like, hanging it on the wall or whatever, it would be a uniform way of students in every class receiving their, their grades at the same time.
Well, my, again, my guess is we're getting plenty of feedback on this, and I, I guess I would treat this as an experiment, and we'll see. We have, we made decisions based on various trade-offs with input from various stakeholders, and we'll see how this goes.
Conversation about final exams continues and their impact on scheduling and, and on student health and well-being. So we're continuing that conversation.
Yeah, that's the bigger.
It surprised me, and I brought this up that are, that, you know, that, that actually the, why do we have final exams? Was starting, starting to be thrown into the mix.
Why did that happen?
So that, that was, that not a surprise to you, I'm sure, Mel? It was like, oh, wow, really? So there's lots of things really, for sure.
So is there, is this like a tax levy? We have to approve this tonight? Because I'm not so sure I'm gonna give you a yes vote, and I, I don't know if I'd go to no on anything the last two years.
Or you could abstain.
I could, but I, I mean, I guess I wish we dismissed six important people. It certainly would have had a lot to say about this. I'm kind of a Casey in terms of, I know one of my kids will have a nervous breakdown. I know one of my kids will be appreciative and thank you so much for two weeks of buying time. And so at the end of the day. That, that very well may be the state of the, the topic. I mean, I, I, here's one thing I'm willing to go out on a limb and say, we will not make 100% of the people happy on this one. Well, yeah, again, I'm being facetious. I think, I think, I guarantee you, if you survey the kids, even the students who may have a lower risk of pushback from home, I still think they want to know because those, every kid at Libertyville or Vernon Hills puts a lot of time into trying to be as best they can, and they won't get that feedback. I mean, how would you like to give a presentation and say, we'll get back to you two weeks? So I would, I don't disagree with that at all. I guess I'm saying, let's assume that happens. So we give the kids, we get six out of six kids, I want my grade for Christmas. Okay, so now, so we're gonna take an instructional day out, or we're gonna come in on Monday.
Well, here's, Pat, here's my concern.
Or, or maybe there's other...
We have to send it back through the process, basically, and there's been hours and hours and hours of hard work by a lot of people on this committee, that then we sort of back to, back to them, back to square one, to, to go through that process, because, you know, we're one group, we have to approve it, but they did the work to come up with this, so I think it's, it's only respectful to have them then reevaluate whatever recommendation we've had.
I, I would agree, and I, I appreciate that comment, I think that's an important comment. And I wonder if instead of taking the vote tonight, if we challenged the committee to see if there still isn't maybe one other option, would it be possible to come up with a different result that the board could unanimously support? Or is what you have presented truly, there's not gonna be a different option that, that if we challenge you to come up with another scenario? If that's not really going to be fruitful, then I don't want to ask you to do that.
I'll use to be a little more respectful of the, the, the time and all of the thoughtfulness that has gone into this, because I certainly wouldn't pretend to know better than the people that put this forward after hours of collaboration and discussion.
Well, just provide a little more background. So we did look at, I would say, four different versions of this over multiple months. We started looking at this last year, so we've been reflecting on this for, since last fall, really, we started looking at this calendar, and we've reviewed it four different times. The grading day of January fourth has been on there for feedback to the community members and to the staff over those multiple months. And so while we certainly could take another go at it, and we did have some versions of it that didn't have grading day on January fourth, this is the one that the committee recommended after those multiple months and multiple calendars. So, you know, we're open to doing whatever you suggest that we do, but the background is that we, as we know, we did do quite a bit of work to come up with this particular version. That doesn't mean it's written in stone.
My, my only additional comment would be, I would not want to change that at the risk of further imbalancing the two semesters. I think that's gotta be the, the most important piece there, so...
Let's clarify, so one, to Kevin's specific question, there is no, call it legislative requirement that we approve this tonight, is that correct?
No, and there is also no requirement that we don't come back and modify this after it is approved, which we've done in the past with you.
Alright, so let me just ask the other question one more way though. So what are the implications of not approving this tonight? Are there any really, other than...
Let's, let's notice for planning to our sender schools and to our community.
Although in reality, so the sender schools typically...
Are most impacted by our vacation.
They wait for us, but they're looking for our vacation period.
Our vacation.
And so whether the vacation started Monday or started Fridays...
It's our spring break.
Yeah, spring break is really the one I'm saying.
But if the students don't come back until Tuesday, and they end up nearing that, then the family could be, you know, they could make their holiday plans around that, depending on what the feeder schools do.
And I would say that the, you know, the one solution that would fix this is splitting the winter break, and that would have a, a huge impact on families in the community, and that is the least favorite of the drafts that we reviewed. So splitting the winter break, by starting the winter break a bit later in the midweek, is not something I think that would gain approval to get that.
Well, when you say splitting the winter break all the time, because if I look at the calendar, that's the only alternative.
If we started the winter break on, say, the twenty-second or the twenty-third, we could have grading day prior to break, but we wouldn't begin break until midweek, which is not the solution that was...
But if grading day was the twenty-first, are students there that day? So to the community, it's like, no impact? It's an impact on all of our teachers?
Oh, no, no, yes, yes.
So the voice in the community's gonna be fine, because giving my grades before Christmas, I'm afraid, but, okay. Um, no, I'm not, I'm not rallying for that solution, I'm just saying the community's probably gonna say, work Monday. Right? Okay.
And I can tell you...
I mean, look, we're not ready to vote on this, I'm more than happy to push it and say, we'll come back and finish this, alright? The only thing is, I, I'm not sitting here seeing a better solution.
That's the problem.
And that's, you know, I'm not seeing big harm in delay, if it takes a little bit of a delay to get everybody to wrap their heads around this, and fully, you know, study it and understanding implications. I'm personally okay with that, I'm not trying to ram this group. I'm just saying, just from what I hear, it was well thought out, and any of the other alternatives have some significant disadvantages. Okay, now, you know, I kind of go to Don's point, I mean, I'm not, I'm not convinced that all our teachers are gonna wait until the Fourth of January to come back and, or whatever day that is.
There's gonna be some that have that last Friday final, but me as a teacher, I would have two Wednesday, two Thursday, one Friday, if that were the case, then most of my grades would be done, and students would know their grades before they left the break.
And that's why it seems like a lot, some of this we're just hung up, and we gotta lock down power school, right? And is there any flexibility on that? I mean, I don't...
When does power school lock down?
Start of exams.
Start of exams, yeah, that's a problem.
The teachers have full access and can see grades.
Yeah, just you can't, you can't get into it until they're all posted up. So if you did your grades, but Lisa didn't do her grades, and Kevin went on and checked your class, and it goes, well, what's wrong with Mrs. Hessel? You know, she doesn't have her grades posted yet, and she doesn't have to have them posted. Of course, she would have them posted, of course, I get that, Lisa, but...
I'm probably...
Yeah, the alternatives are that great, and just, I wanted to make one comment about the split week. We had to do that, and it's probably...
I don't know what a split week is for me, again.
It's prob, when...
Big season starts Tuesday.
Instead of getting, finishing up on Friday or Thursday, you know, the week before, and then Saturday, Sunday, that following Monday, break starts. So instead of doing that, you start like on a Wednesday.
You lose a weekend.
So you go Monday and Tuesday, you lose a weekend. So you go like, your first day off is Wednesday, and you come back in two weeks. Well, the parents didn't like that for planning, the elementary feeder districts hated it, right? And we were trying to do the same thing. So the feedback from them, what I've done, and Rita has done, at this time of year, they need to do their planning, they need to do exactly what we're doing. So they need to know what we're doing.
Right.
So they need to know when the breaks are, you know, when our kids are gonna be out at the high school, and so we have tentatively sure to go...
But it's again, three weekends, basically. From my understanding, it's, people in the community want three weekends.
Right. But when we split the weeks, those were student attendance days that we split, like they did, the students came Monday, Tuesday.
Right.
If you shift the grading day to that Monday, that doesn't really affect the students, it affects the teachers, which I realize is an issue. I'm just saying, you're not talking apples to apples with that.
Sure. Do, do teachers have to physically be present for grading day when they do it?
Yes, it's a contractual thing.
Yeah. We, we could certainly review all the concerns that you've expressed at our district leadership team level, and come back with this on November fourth at committee, if that's what you prefer.
I, I mean, we've had such an awesome focus on mental health and wellness for our students. I can, I can only speak for the ones I had, and I had across the board academically, it would have been a mental stressor, a big mental stressor, to ask any of the three of them to wait two weeks for feedback on their finals. Because of the time and energy that they've been, the emotional, oh my god, the emotional that goes into some of that. Asking them to wait two weeks for feedback on that is, is a, a big mental health stressor, and I think, I think we are not sending the same message with this.
Although, although respectfully, I respect that point of view, and I, I don't deny that that's what's out there. I can, I can see my own kids doing the same thing, right? I mean, I, I can remember vividly my youngest daughter, when we were going through this, and she was running to the computer all the time. Part of me looks at this and says, and maybe this is the chance we get to say, don't worry about it. You're gonna find out on January the second, and it's really hard. Somehow, in a way, I almost feel like, you know, these guys are talking about taking classes only for the point of G P S. Alright, and every once in a while, I go, well, maybe this is the example, it's not gonna matter, because you're gonna find out on January second, and you know what, on January second, the world's still gonna be here. And so there probably is a way to, I'll call it spin this thing, and a way to get them to appreciate the bigger picture.
Did talk about that around the...
But I understand it's not gonna happen, isn't it?
My college students wait two weeks to get their grades.
Yeah, okay. But listen to this, there's still a lot of conversation, and I don't feel comfortable bringing this to a vote. Okay, I don't want you guys to feel like this is ran through, I, I, I don't want to discredit the good work that was done by this team, I'm not sure that I see an alternative proposal that is better, but I think there's probably some benefit in allowing this to sink in a little bit on the vote table.
Or again, you could take a vote, honestly, Pat, you guys can take a vote, because it's my, I'm bad, you've given me this thing nineteen times.
Yeah, no, I think that...
So, and again, if you can't look together and get it through, it doesn't matter, some of us vote no or abstain, and we move on, and, you know, that's another thing too, so whatever.
Well, and look, the, the other thing is, we could vote on the calendar tonight, okay? And we can still have some discussion about, I mean, we can still go back and have some discussion about the grading day. I think if you were to say to us tonight, look, our concern is more about the kids getting immediate feedback on their grades, and remember, we've kind of all brought, we've kind of all been brought up in that system, right? Where we take something, we get immediate feedback, or we expect immediate feedback. So this change would require communication, right, to do that. And the reason, part of the reason the kids are going is because that's the way the system has always been, right? So you take your finals on Thursday, Friday's a grading day, and by Friday you get your grades, so you know that, so my kids did the same thing, you start going on the computer, you start looking, because you know that, moving forward. If you were to say to us, look, we understand the imbalance in the semesters, now I will tell you upfront, that teachers will, would probably not be tremendously supportive of that, but if you said, we think it's more important that the kids get immediate feedback on their finals, so, you know, go ahead and eliminate one instructional day, because we think that's the greater good, well, we can do that, we can make that, we can make that fix, right? I mean, we can do that.
See, that would, that would be one of the requirements I've been on, is I would say any other solution we come up with cannot remove an instructional day. We've had that conversation over and over and over again. I would not...
Because it is the double that Jim talked about, it's not only you lose one, you lose one first semester, you're adding one second semester, right? Because now, January fourth, or January second, I think it's support.
But the reality is, that is, that is essentially losing an instructional day on the first semester class.
I don't think any of us wanna see that happen, but I wonder if you went back to committee and said, the board wants to unanimously support your recommendation. At this point, they don't feel like they have unanimous support for this recommendation, and they're asking, is there one more scenario? It's very challenging, and it's not meant to be insulting, and I echo again the same apology for not catching this, so we could have discussed it in committee. Would it be possible to, to respectfully ask, is there one more conversation about having the grading day not be on January fourth without losing an instructional day? Is, is that possible?
Now, you need, you need to be honest, because you've looked at all these options, and if there's not another, if there's not another option that you see out there, we just need to say that.
Yeah, I mean, I, given the parameters, the, seemingly the only solution would be to have the grading day on the twenty-first, which would...
Kind of what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Would lose the instructional day.
No.
Oh, so...
But it would be...
It would be...
It would cause the teachers to not have the grading day. When everybody else had a day off.
Yeah, and I mean, that's the only...
The trade, the trade-off, I'm assuming, would be they might not have to come in until the fifth. Right?
Right.
They would not have to come in till the fifth, because that yellow day would move to...
I mean, there'd be no reason to add a day on there. Now, again, I'm not saying that's a good thing either, because you can't, you know, it's just awkward, the way the whole...
John, go ahead.
And there are times when it doesn't.
So I wouldn't be bothered by that, as a teacher, to say that everybody else is gonna get those three extra days.
You would or wouldn't?
Wouldn't bother me.
Well, who's gonna, who knows who's gonna have to do that, too?
Well, no, because you would, you would have to come back to work on that following Monday if you were a teacher or administrator, you would be back in the building. If you're gonna talk about moving the twenty-first to the reading day, and then taking the twenty-first and putting that on the fourth, that would be an awkward conversation.
And if you had, we sometimes get this, because many of our teachers have spouses that are also educators, so they work in other school districts.
Yeah.
And so they're trying to partner up travel plans and vacations, and you've got one that has to come in and work, and you can't be off at the happy work, so...
It doesn't always work evenly, but we also hear, you know, educator, childcare concerns when our, when our breaks are different from the breaks that their children have.
I don't think that it's ideal that the students will have to wait two weeks. However, it's not feedback, it's a summative grade, there's nothing that they can do about that grade. It's a semester grade, so it's not like they're gonna get feedback and then have an opportunity to change, because the semester's over. So I think that if I had to go to my students and say, hey, this is the way it's gonna work this year, we got a little year where it's that way before, but you're just gonna have to wait until after break before you get your grades, some would be disappointed, but I think they get it.
Okay, so we've had a lot of discussion. I guess, you know, the question I would like feedback on is, is there more discussion to be had here, or are we just, you know, kind of aired it, they're aware of it, to Prentice's point, we could take a vote, and we can go back and say, look, can you help us address this issue? And it's either, A, I think how we have to position this and prepare for it, because it is what it is, or is there some alternative, either on the calendar, which could be modified, or not on the calendar, but some other way we can manage this, so they can't get access to power school until on the Monday after, after the holidays? It does sound like there's legitimate concerns, I'm not in any way, shape, or form trivializing emotional impact on the kids.
It seems that...
You're willing to wait to...
I don't know, but...
Go ahead. Wait, you're willing to...
I said I'm willing to wait, to let them look at it, if they come up with a better solution, but...
Well, again, we can always modify the calendar, I think, I think the decision that we can vote on this, and you can vote, vote your kind, we don't have to be unanimous, let's be clear on that, okay? We see how the vote goes, and it either passes or fails, even if it passes, we could come back and say, well, we want you to take another look at it.
Should we review?
Yeah.
But, but we as a board just, we can accept the recommendation, committee, or we can vote it down, right? And I can say, well, I like a split week, so I make a motion to accept calendar as is, but go through the twenty-third of December is instructional day, and go through January sixth. You know, I'm making this stuff up, right? And still giving everybody two weeks off, and if you don't get three weekends, I'm sorry, you only get two weekends, but if you, because we've heard that curriculum days are important to the teachers, and, right, and so for those teachers that teach only half semester classes, because I guess that would be the only ones that really does impacts the curriculum days, right?
Yeah.
I mean, right, so, I mean, at the end of the day, I, I've never heard the discussion before, but, again, I might not get elected on this platform, but if you really think you need three weekends off over a winter break, well then, okay, I'm not your guy. I think the kids probably need a nice two weeks to go recalibrate, that'd give them two weekends, and that just works best for our calendar and call it a day. I mean, so, that, that's why, and then by the way, there's no motion on the table yet or a second one.
No, there's not.
So you've just kind of heard why I would vote no or abstain.
So, so it seems to me that, in looking at this, the question really, really isn't as much the days on the calendar as it is the process of getting the grades to the kids. So I guess my challenge to take back would be, I have no problem with this calendar the way it is, if there was a way that we could solve that, that issue, without changing
It, it seems like a drastic thing to have to change the calendars. So, you know, have people come in, split weeks, that kind of thing, just because of the pre-existing process of holding the grades until a specific arbitrary day. Well, the, the challenge with this calendar is, remember, when we do a grading day, that's a workday for teachers. So that has to count as a workday for teachers. So if that's on the first Monday.
But that's what I'm saying, is there.
When we come back, if that's a first Monday, then again, we're not matching up with other districts in the county, and when they're taking breaks, and, and all of that. So you're requiring somebody to come back in on Monday when everybody else is off, right?
That's what I'm saying, is does it, does it require them to come in on the 21st? Does, is there some other process? And so it's, yeah, we know it, it's, it's, uh, words are powerful, you know, we, we talked about the, the concept of words. We call it a grading day, but it's not truly just a grading day. I will guarantee that the teachers aren't sitting around all day on that Monday, the, whatever it is of, of January, calculating grades, putting them in the grade, putting them in Power School, whatever. They're doing other things that are important to get ready for the second semester. So I think we're getting hung up on this nuance of, okay, it's grading day, and we have to restrict access to whatever for those two weeks, because this is our official grading day, and this is the way that it's all extended. So my, my opinion is, you know, is there another way to look at that, rather than, well, I'm a teacher, and I got to present my grade? Or, guess what, I need to work that next Monday. I would say, whatever it takes.
But by, by contract, we have to have a grading day, first and second semester. It has to be an entire day just.
I'm not saying to take that away, I'm just saying that that's, you know, it's.
There are teachers who would say that they use that, you know, that grading day to grade written responses, exams. Yeah, but that's, that's why we have it, is so that we provide that compensated time where teachers do their grading. So, I, I hear what you're saying, Jim, that it is really, it could potentially not be a calendar issue more than a practice issue, but that is a contractual practice that we're talking about.
With this calendar, would Power School open up on the 5th? The day after the grading day?
It'll open at 3:00 PM on the 4th.
Okay, all right, okay.
So on that very day.
All right, honestly, I think we've had a lot of conversation. I am, I'm going to reverse myself and say I'm comfortable, we can at least take it to a vote, okay? And honestly, I want to encourage everybody to vote how you feel you should, plain and simple. Depending on the outcome of the vote, vote, we can decide what the next steps are. I'm sure regardless of the outcome, there will be next steps. Okay, is there ever a vote? So we need a motion. So we need a motion to approve the calendar as presented. Okay, and then a second.
I move to accept the proposed 2020-21 calendar as presented.
And I'll second.
Okay, all right, roll call.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
No.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
No.
Okay, so motion carries five, two. And for the record, I just say, I'm perfectly fine with a non-unanimous vote, okay? In fact, I encourage that, because otherwise we don't have these discussions, right, all right? Now, next steps, okay? I would ask you guys, this was great discussion, we're very concerned about the impact on students, okay? I would ask you guys to come back to us and give us some options to mitigate that, okay? Anywhere from, well, here's how we're going to sell between now and next Christmas, okay? Which gives us a whole year to figure that out. Or whatever else you come up with. And I would actually request also that we include these six in our assessment of options, okay? Frankly, they may come back and say, "We'll get over it," okay? Wouldn't it be great if, all right, I don't know what they're going to say, okay? Their gut feeling is probably, "Oh my gosh, can't wait." But let's work out with them, make sure they're fully educated on the pros and cons of all the alternatives. Would be a great lunchtime discussion if anybody's looking for a topic on Monday. That might be too soon.
Do you have juniors on that? They're all seniors, I think.
I had a junior last year, and they're all seniors.
Sometimes, it just depends on the.
Right, because they're all seniors.
Which is a good point.
I would like to challenge you to add some juniors to that perspective.
Okay, so, so I'll admit that because many of us, and I'm going to add my name to the list, missed this subtlety in the calendar, all right? And therefore I would.
I'm glad it sounds that different, yes, they would have called it to your intent.
Therefore, from that perspective, it was not maybe our finest moment, okay? This, too, we can use to our long-term benefit, and show that in spite of that, we'll come out of this ahead, okay? I'm highly confident.
Well said.
Okay?
It was, it was an excellent discussion, so.
We need to do this.
I, I would say, even though we didn't do it in committee, I'd say this was the discussion we would have had in committee. And there's nothing wrong with, since we didn't have it in committee, there's nothing wrong with having the discussion at the board meeting, right? So.
We couldn't go to the committee meetings anyway, honestly.
That's true.
No, we certainly, what's that? We couldn't have gone to, our committee meetings go so long anyway, especially the last one.
Yeah.
We couldn't have gone, we couldn't have had this discussion and given tax levy.
Yeah, that's true.
What do you mean?
Because as you talk too much.
Let's be clear, I think if we, I think if we would have been aware of it, we would have, we would have gone a lot longer. Yeah, I don't have any doubt about that.
Well, we might have said, "When can we come back?"
Thank goodness we did spread it, yeah.
Nine o'clock was the witching hour at the last meeting.
So get my apologies first.
All right, but again, I, I just want to make sure I'm clear. I appreciate that we had that conversation, I appreciate that you brought it up. I want to encourage all of you to bring up issues, no matter how uncomfortable they may seem, okay? You know, how many have seen the movie Twelve Angry Men, all right?
I get that.
That's a good one.
And the plane, they did a Libertyville, about five years ago.
It was called Twelve Angry Jurors.
A good point, and that's a good, good point as well.
That's how they did it at high school.
I am forever corrected on that, that's a good point, okay?
I think the students set the, set the bar for us, I think.
Yeah, okay. And I'm glad we did at least take a vote, but we need to fix this problem.
Okay, now, just communication wise, so the theater school superintendents know in our recommended break orders, so our winter holiday and our spring break, they also know that our, our recommended calendar, that our return date was on the 5th for students, based on that calendar. Because remember, 4th is grading day, 5th is coming back. So as they start to do their calendars, they will probably incorporate something similar to that, would be my guess.
And I have no, my concerns, which still stand, have nothing to do with when the students return. But just as in good faith, I voted yes, despite my concerns because of the trust I have in you and your committee. I would just ask that those be, that conversation be had, not having anything to do with what day they return. Because that, that, once we approve it, and it gets released to the theater districts, we really can't change those parameters.
No, we can't, it's just.
We could. Well, depends what they do and when they do it. Now, no more, I'm meeting the superintendents, we have our, our normal like quarter lead lunch. So, calendar, at this time of year, calendar is, you know, always on that.
I mean, the theater districts could very well, I don't know what their calendar is, but they could very well be starting later and use, then maybe they're going to go to school until Wednesday. Maybe they go to school until Wednesday, I don't know.
But they're not, they're not concerned with balancing semesters.
They don't care.
All right, very quickly, let me ask one more question. Are we, are we unanimous, though, on the idea, no matter what you come up with, you cannot, I'm going to throw out, remove an instructional day?
Yes.
Ah, yes, I would agree with that, because I.
Just want to be clear, all right, because I don't want to come back with another alterment and say, "You know, we talked about this," and say, "Ah, if we give up an instructional day, we're okay." So we're saying no. Is there any other guardrail that they've got to deal with?
I mean, going back to school, I mean, August, in August, in August, or starting the process, which.
I guess that's.
So the teachers will have to come back.
We probably have to have everybody go a day earlier, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Which means that, that last, that first week of August, which is what we really, seriously try and protect for everybody, everybody.
And you will hear more on that, believe me.
And that, that's what makes it polite.
If we get much earlier. All right, good?
All right.
So we're done.
You're still on my report.
Oh, I jinked too much. I jinked, I jinked.
I tried to move us along, I tried.
My fault, I jinked this.
But you kept holding me back.
I jinked this tonight, yeah, I said, I said to Jim, "We won't be long tonight," so I jinked this.
Okay, so moving right along, at, at P and P Committee, we reviewed the performance recognition incentive, which is in our contract. And we have met the criteria for the performance recognition incentive. So the teachers will receive 1.5% on the first Friday in December. Is, is when they get that, except for Tom, no, I'm just kidding. Yeah, and then what we're also asking you to do is, our history of this is that our belief system in this district has always been that everybody in the district contributes to the success of our students, from our custodial maintenance staff, our educational support staff, you know, all the way up through the administrative team. And so what we ask for tonight is, I am certifying that we've met the performance recognition incentive as reviewed in committee, and we are asking for a motion to authorize payment of that to all the other employees in the district.
I move to authorize the performance recognition incentive.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, LHS pool parking update, Dan and Mark.
Any interest in time? The new pool is done, we're in checklists, so we're going to close out, hopefully within the next month or so, so stay tuned on that. We have, there's Gilbane as an active team working on completing all those little fine details of corrections and fixing things. And the, and the renovations in addition that you see going on, there's a lot of progress being made in all of the areas. But I will say, there's something you need to be aware of, is we are not, we are not sure that the gym will be ready by the start of school for the fall of 2020. So seeing what can be made to make up the time between now and then, but the schedule does not look good on that getting done. So that's the area right over there, you can see, there's not a lot of walls up. But if you go to the other side, you see several floors of walls up. So there's some of the foundational things that are working through, so just wanted to let you know that. But we'll have, we can give you more detailed information to center on next meeting, the looks and impact, I mean.
On the gym, Dan, what do you want, John?
No, I'd say the bigger impact is the dance facility. We, we've got some classes that we have proposed with the expectation that they'll be in that facility in the fall. So we're already talking about perhaps only offering certain, those classes second semester, just to give us the buffer that we need there.
Is there any way to reposition resources to focus on that, even if it's a further delay in the gym?
I asked them about that, and.
Because that, that shell is there, right? I mean.
The problem is they, well, you guys should.
Yeah, that's, that area is really one, well, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but that area is kind of one, one unit of construction. And so that, that area is, a lot of the things, mechanical systems are all intertwined. And so for that area to reach substantial completion and allow for occupancy, that, there's not a, there's not a segregation of those spaces, is that fair?
Yes, first, yeah.
All right, so I'd ask the question anyway, so I get it from an engineering perspective. But I guess I just ask, if that's the critical part, then I think we should just challenge Gilbane and say, "Well, we took a further delay in the gym" with the hope that we can bring you out on, maybe it doesn't work, but if that, if they had an option, I'd ask you guys to think about whether that.
Because the systems are combined.
Yeah. Okay, I don't know what the critical path on the program is, but maybe that's an option for you, because I'd hate to see us delaying programs.
You could ask the question, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the only, maybe you've already asked, and they said no.
Yeah, I did ask that question. I mean, I, I asked the question, "Could we start moving on the dance?"
Okay.
Knowing that we already have some slowdown on the, and they, and to both of their points, no, those, the one really can't be finished before the other. They go hand in hand.
They're integrated, because they're within the same facility. And, and just to, Dan and Mark have touched base on this, but the, the issues at Vernon Hills is, there were underground issues there that were not known and unanticipated, no way to be known there. And so it's taken a lot of extra time on the underground work, more than anybody, you know, would have anticipated, could have anticipated. And we have to have that work done, obviously, to do foundation, and then start to lay block wall, and all of that. And, you know, the weather's going to get pretty hairy later this week already, so, okay? All right, anything else you guys want to add? Okay, FOIA request. We received a FOIA request on 10/18/2019. The commercial response deadline was 11/2011/19/2019. The question was Bethany Simpson, data acquisition specialist, Smart Procure. Information requested was all current employee staff contact information. Request is limited to readily available records without physically copying, scanning, or printing documents. Any editable electronic document is acceptable. The specific information requested for your record keeping system is first name, last name, position, title, department, employment type, i.e. full-time, part-time contractor, general office phone number, direct office phone number, business cell phone, if provided by the school district, office fax email address, office physical address, and office mailing address. Follow-up was done by Brian Kelly, responded on 10/23/2019. The time spent was several minutes on that.
How many have this one before?
We get these, yeah, we get these requests all the time, so, yeah, which is why it probably took not too long a time. Okay, I just have Pat, a few others under here, just to give real quick. The ISBE state school report cards will be publicly released on the 30th. We anticipate, so any information is embargoed until the 30th, but we anticipate that our report cards at both buildings will be, not surprisingly, very favorable, okay? But we just wanted to let you know. We reminded you about the Foundation BIG event. We also, just to reiterate what Pat said again, the committee meetings are on November 4th, Monday. The board meeting is on Monday, November 11th.
No, Tuesday.
Tuesday, November 11th, sorry.
No, Tuesday, 12th.
12th, okay, sorry. Tuesday, November 12th, and then our next meeting won't be until December. And that will be a combined committee and board meeting in December.
Real quick.
Yes, it'll be quick, to Kevin's point, that'll be a quick evening.
Wait, I got to see you guys the next three weeks in a row. Then you got to wait six weeks, then you got to wait over six weeks.
December, and then December 9th.
Then you get a big break, so just like finishing bar meeting, Kevin. Then we get a big break for a couple of years, and then we get, you know, we get to have the discussion. And I think that's it, Mary, did I miss anything? And I got Rita's piece there. Okay, Pat, that concludes the very in-depth superintendent's reports for tonight.
Okay, next, can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed, with the exception of, we're going to remove item 3B and come back and approve that in the next week?
Yeah, just a quick note on that, with Caroline passing and traveling, there's nothing substantial, just a couple of edit changes. So we just wanted to clean up a couple of things. So that's the only reason we'll just bring it back, you know, next time around, okay?
I move, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, next, Facilities and Finance Committee Chair.
Okay, so we did meet as a group on Monday, October 14th. We did a tour of LHS, fieldhouse, the old pool, and certain classrooms. We also talked a little bit solar, but most importantly, we talked about the tax levy. And with that, I will turn it over to our, I mean, you're not the CFO, you're assistant, but.
Doesn't matter.
The finance guy.
The ma'am, you just call him the ma'am.
So, our levy information was presented, the estimate was presented at the committee meeting. Right now, we're anticipating it would be, you know, CPI 1.9. With new construction, you're getting closer to 2.3. However, I told you about the assessment information that is still, we're waiting for. We are still waiting for that information, unless you all got your assessment notices and no one else told me. So that is still deeply concerning to me in terms of the timing for everything later in the spring, in terms of tax bills. So the county has a massive amount of work in front of them. I think Libertyville is hoping to get published maybe sometime this week or so, and Vernon will probably be a bit later. So we're, I'm trying to be in touch, I was, I was talking to our township, one of our township assessors today, and talking with the county. We've got preliminary information from the county, but there was an asterisk that said if you're in Libertyville or Town, Libertyville or Vernon Townships, which are the two townships we're in, the information is very preliminary. So we have a preliminary estimate for new construction at about 17.5 million, which is definitely higher than average. But what I don't have is any detail about what those are or anything like that. So I'm trying to get information, it'll be, it'll be very important to get as much information as I can in the next two weeks to know. So where are we at in terms of our levy? We would typically, with a $300,000 cushion, be at a 2.7% levy. At this point, I still think I would recommend a 3% to give us the cushion, because there's a lot of unknown, there's more unknown information this year than we've had in previous year, pretty much than we've had in my entire career of doing this. And so that's, I think, where we're, we're sitting. We'll talk more next week in our committee meeting with the most current information that I have at that time.
All right, so just run through the whole process. So at the last committee meeting, you introduced it, you talked about. Alright, so just run through the whole process, so at the last committee meeting, you introduced it, you talked about an hour, and you had what recommendations for the last committee meeting?
I, my recommendation at that point would've been a 2.7 in a typical year.
Okay.
Meaning, we could have had a 2.7, which would've given us enough cushion based on the information we have. Due to the amount of information we have, I think a 3 is probably what I would recommend, which, 3 has been in line with what we've done. We'll only get probably end up being two, somewhere between 2.3 and 2.5, but we don't know, there's a lot of unknowns right now.
And we'll talk about it at the next committee meeting.
Yes.
And for final approval at the following board meeting.
Correct, so we're looking for final approval at the November 12th board.
Thank you, okay.
If possible, we can go into December, but rather not in case we can't get a quorum in December, that would be devastating.
Questions on the tax levy? Anything else on your FNF? Great, okay, thanks. P and P Chairperson, Batson.
Thank you, Dr. Rudy, we have a couple things here, we have a list of employment of employees, and these are all coaching positions that have come in since our, our committee meeting earlier in the month. So just need a motion to approve.
A motion to approve the employment of employees.
Second. Okay.
Any, yeah, any comments, questions on these? Okay, roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, we have two board policies for a second reading. We've gone through these in committee, we went through them as first reading last month at the board meeting. Nothing has changed since that point in time, so I think we've all had a chance to, to look at these. Can we have a motion, please?
Move to accept the board policy, second reading, we can adopt them, policy 430 and policy 6240.
Second.
Okay, any further comments or questions on these?
I do.
Okay?
I don't know why I am bothered by this, but I've been going back and forth with Brian about it. The one board policy about field trips and educational tours and the, the use of the word prior. So the superintendent gives us prior approval, or if it's more than 200 miles or overnight, then it requires board approval. And I would like to find a way of having language that doesn't require us to have exceptions. Because there will be times where a team will win an event that allows them to advance to someplace like Springfield, where they're outside of 200 miles, but there won't be a board meeting that will allow us to get prior approval. So the suggestion is, well, we'll just go ahead and let, go ahead and let them do it, and then we'll talk about it afterwards. Couldn't we have a policy that allows for that exception to be stated? So.
So what was the outcome of the discussion between you and?
Do you wanna take it? So I, I mean, you can leave it the way it's written, just prior approval, and just know that a competitive activity or a team may qualify, and you're not gonna have prior approval just because of timing of it. But by leaving it prior, you're, we're setting the, the idea that, you know, we want to, we want everything to have prior approval when, when it can be.
Alright, so let me make sure.
So I have a thought that we change it, and instead of it saying, "All field trips must have the superintendent or designees prior approval, except that field trips beyond 200 mile radius of the school or extending overnight must have prior approval of the Board of Education." I suggest that we strike "except that" and add "and in addition." So all field trips must have the superintendent or designees prior approval, and in addition, field trips beyond a 200 mile radius of the school extending overnight must have board approval. Instead of having that prior there, that way you would have to have the superintendent's prior approval.
Prior approval, but we can approve it afterwards.
But we can approve it afterwards.
He does it prior.
That way it takes care of all of the contingencies, and we don't have to have a board policy that two or three years down the road, we have to reinterpret.
Brian, I would be okay with that. Can we make that change?
So can we agree to that change now and approve that policy with that change?
Do you want to try and think about it first, or? Oh, we can, we can approve it with it.
With that change? Okay.
The change is no doubt.
Correct.
In the worst case scenarios, we'd have to come back and approve it again.
Right.
I think it's worth to get the other language cleaned up.
We should, we should make sure we have that, can you read that again, make sure Carol has that, and then.
Do you want me to just send it to you, or do you want me to read it out loud?
I think I got it, but I'm not looking at it.
So we have it on the.
All field trips must have the superintendent or designees prior approval, and in addition, field trips beyond a 200 mile radius of the school or extending overnight must have the approval of the Board of Education.
So can we get a?
Let's do that again, just to clarify, so let's just say the first sentence was, all field trips.
It's actually one sentence in the original, and I, all I did was strike "except that," and put in "and in addition."
And took out the prior.
And then I got rid of the second part.
Second part.
So we don't have to give prior approval.
Carol, you will have to.
Yeah, I think so. I don't sound convincing.
Well, no, let's do it again.
We have it on.
Alright, because at this point, we're in, I guess we have two options, we either can vote on the, the, the motion was to approve as is. So we either have to reject that motion or amend it.
You amend it.
So that would be an amendment.
Yeah, we just need to re, re.
So just ask for, if you'll accept the amendment. Will you accept the amendment?
I will accept the amendment as.
So now we're looking for. So motion, the motion now is yes, to accept the two policies for approval, have.
Amendment, yes.
And the amendment's clear, right? Carol?
Well, we have it on video.
Yes. Alright.
Karen, your point that language and words matter once again.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Yeah, no, let's see if this could catch.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so we had a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Thank you for that. Roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Motion passes, and that concludes the board of other personnel.
Alright, so you know.
Okay, just a couple of updates, first of all, we got notification from the superintendent of C D O L that, I think if you think back to kind of the beginning of a lot of review of practices, because a student who told appearance of, 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 of being a legal school did lead to the arrest today, or yesterday, of one of the former care professionals for six misdemeanor counts of reckless conductance to excessive force, et cetera. So just that's, that's kind of the end of the sheriff's, you know, that's where the investigation ended up for that particular employee. And, yeah, the other, you know, good news is that the staffing shortage is being addressed. Two of the schools that have had freezes have now opened those to march students. They're still working on the gauge slate, but I believe it's about a 90%, and when they, you know, they're working really, really diligently to try to fill those gaps and make everything work more smoothly, so we've got a lot of this, will be, it'll be well-run, it's just to be safe, and, and those things.
Measured progress there.
I wrote an article in the Daily Herald about the staffing thing.
Yeah.
Good news. Alright, ISBE?
Yeah, just real quick, tomorrow evening is the, the ISBE dinner meeting. It's held at the Doubletree, is it in, in Mundeline? So I will be attending that, I don't know if anyone else has signed up for that, if you're interested.
Who's the speaker? Is there a speaker?
Yeah, there's a speaker, Ralph Martire?
Martire.
Martire, yeah. Executive Director for Tax and Budget Accountability at the, at Roosevelt University, he's, the topic is moving Illinois toward fiscal, fiscal sustainability. I believe that's, it starts pretty early, I believe it starts like 5:30.
You wanna go, like Carol and I, we'll come over and see if we can, and then, of course, Shane Jim.
There's a lot of the brand behind you, yeah.
Kevin, you know Ralph.
Yeah, he's very, he's great.
Yeah, Ralph is really good, and the other thing is Ralph is a senior school board president. So he's also on his local school board, so he's a, he's a finance professional, he's really well-known and acknowledged, and he's, he's, he's just very common sense-y to understand.
If you haven't been to one of these events, they're really, they're really pretty good, and you get to meet a lot of other, I mean, it's just roomful of board members and a handful of administrators. And they're all from around the area, so it's all Lake County.
And it's right down the road, you know, in the Doubletree and Mundeline, so.
Alright, any else? Alright, so can I ask for a motion to move into executive session? Again, topic tonight is employment of an employee has filed file C F O, 2C1.
Second. Second.
Roll call, please.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye, alright, motion carries, and again, we will not be taking any further action after the discussion tonight, thanks.